Good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM. We're gonna call to order the regular Planning Commission meeting for August 9th, 2022. We're gonna do a brief roll call and then seat an alternate. So Nicole Davison, you're Richard Gordon.
Here.
Thomas Fitting.
Here.
Jason Devoe.
Here.
And I'm Michelle Williams. I am here. Kirk Scott is absent today, so we're gonna go ahead and seat one of our alternates, and we're gonna seat Timothy Leducer. And you did have a name tag.
I did?
Yeah. So it's very official. Also, just wanna thank Ally Christensen for being here today. Ally is interning with the Planning Department and Land Use Departments this summer, and she is helping us while Gary is away on vacation. So thank you very much for being here. All right, and now we are gonna go ahead and move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. So if anyone can stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Our next item is additions to the agenda, and I would like to put forth a motion that we add an item under Reports and gain the update from the Regional Planning Committee, which Rich was able to attend the COGS Regional Planning Committee meeting. So I am making that motion. Does anyone second?
I second.
Thank you, Jason. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Any abstain? Great. So we'll go ahead and add that under Reports. So we'll put that as G. Regional Planning Update. Okay. Next, we have Public Delegations. So this is an opportunity when members of the public are invited to come up and speak to the Commission about what's on your mind. With exception of agenda items, referrals, applications subject to a decision by the Commission, applications in a public hearing or in litigation also may not be discussed. The members of the Commission will not directly answer questions or make comment during delegations. But we do listen. Anybody here for Public Delegations? Okie doke. Moving right on. Ally, did we have any communications come in?
Just from Sustained O.C.T. from the Conservation Commission. We're updating that, and we're submitted on August 23rd. What is the due date? We got a review session on August 15th, and that should be it.
Awesome. That's great. And that's an every-two-year?
Three years.
Three-year? Okay.
Yep.
Fantastic. All right, zoning representative, Tim.
Yes, so due to a last-minute scheduling conflict, I could not make it, but I did call in and get updated on it. There was one item on their agenda there. Application of 138 BPR LLC for a special permit. That was approved, and that was pretty much all I had to report on that.
All right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I do not see Mr. Weber here today, so we'll go ahead and move on to our Planning Director update. Ally, I don't know if you had anything. On behalf of Gary?
Nope, just that we have been approved for the Civil Properties Grant. So that's $2,000 for an architectural study with Samuel Smith House. And so the line of question.
Fantastic. And Ally's being very modest. She wrote that grant. So kudos to you, and thank you. Okay, subcommittees. For the Plan of Conservation and Development P.O.C.D. Implementation Subcommittee, we sadly do not have any updates to share at this time. Not a lot of activity going on this summer, but I know that there's been quite a bit happening with the Affordable Housing Plan update. And in Kirk's absence, is there anyone from that Subcommittee who would be willing to give us an update?
I don't think there's been a meeting since the last.
Yeah, there hasn't been a meeting.
There's gonna be a meeting next Monday with the consultants, and I'm gonna go over, they gave us a statistics, whatever, on East Line, which were informative, and I guess we'll discuss that. You know, the previous meeting, they discussed the zoning regulations. They suggested that could be modified or changed, whatever. So we'll know a lot more at the next meeting.
Excellent. Yeah, and I think I saw that that presentation from the last meeting is online for anyone who's interested in that.
Very impressive, all the materials he's come up with so far. Happy that we picked them.
Fantastic. I do not have a Chair Report today, so why don't we move on to the Regional Planning Update? And Rich, you were able to attend that. Thank you.
Yeah, it was on Zoom. And they have representatives from zoning and planning, and I guess town planners, and other representatives from other land use representatives from towns in the upper northeast part of Connecticut. And most of the towns were represented, I guess more than half. And that was the first time they were able to have a, I think, have a quorum since they did before COVID, I think.
Yeah.
They'd approved the minutes from January 2020. But it was very interesting, because you see what other towns are going through. Salem is going through, they're doing their P.S.P.O.C.D. A lot of them discussing the issues with cannabis establishments. They, I have a new chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary was voted on. And they also had a representative from CIRCA. It's due for resilience and climate adaptation. They're, they deal with flood and extreme heat hazards and erosion issues, and they gave us updates. And I think most towns gave their recommendations of what they wanted to see. I think Gary must have sent something to them, because they mentioned East Line and what they were looking at. But I think their recommendations right now for resilience projects focused on New Haven and, I guess, New Haven County, I guess, and, you know, Fairfield area, that sort of thing. Wasn't really much in our area, but, um, let's see if there's anything else there. That's about it. If any other, any other questions, let me know. They gave a person who had a contact person in CIRCA who might be able to help with any questions. I'm sure Gary's been in touch with them also.
Great. Well, thank you so much for attending on our behalf. Any questions for Rich? Okay. Let's move on to minutes approval. We are looking for a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of July 12th.
So motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
There's also some typos.
Okay, great. Go for it.
Okay. Under page four, under Review of Subdivision Regulations, the second line, that the regulation is less cumbersome and easier for applicants. Makes to understand and expands definitions. Easy for applicants to understand and expand definitions, I think.
I saw that too. I think that's supposed to be understands.
Yes, understand and expand. And just, I think I have the motion, they had Gordon instead of Gordon. No big deal, but. What's that?
I couldn't hear that. I don't have the minutes. I'm on a tablet.
Oh, it's under page four, under Review of Subdivision.
I got the, the understand as opposed to understands.
Right, applicants to understand and expands definitions, I think.
It's two words kind of mixed together without the N in between.
Just under motion that Gordon.
Did you want to add an and, or again, I don't have the minutes up on me, so I have to.
His goal is to.
Yeah, I think it should be understand and expand.
Understand and expand.
At least that's how I read it.
Yep. And then where was the one, Rich, where there's?
I guess it was on the motion, had Davison Gordon.
Okay, so that's, on the motion to adjourn, there's an extra S on Gordon.
You called me Gordon, I don't like you.
It's only one A in there, so.
It's an important motion. I'll make sure it's correct. Okay.
Motion to approve amended minutes.
Thank you, Tim.
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes unanimously. And thank you, Sue, for another job really well done. These are, we're always nitpicking the tiniest typos because you capture them so well, the whole, the whole meeting, so thank you. Okay. Moving on, we are still open in a public hearing for application of Kristen T. Clark, P.E., of Nianic Real Estate LLC owner. Application for a two-lot re-subdivision of approximately 5.13 acres of land, zoned RU40, located at 9 Upper Kensington Drive, East Line, Assessors Map 40.0, Lot 17, with a waiver request from Section 23.5B.1 of the zoning regulations, Section 6-8-7 Stormwater Management requirements, Section 5.2.2G Erosion and Sedimentation Control requirements, and Section 5-2-2B and C2 Preliminary Resource Impact and Conservation Plan. So we got this application made 10th. It opened the public hearing on June 14th, and the applicant granted us an extension, which we are currently operating under right now. So it looks like Mr. Garrity has some information to present to us. Now we are ready.
I'm gonna make it easy on you tonight.
Great.
First, one thing I wanna, I did get Gary's memo last night, had a chance to go through it. There's one issue with that, but I think I can address that in a few minutes regarding the waiver. But what I want to do initially is to correct a statement that I just was playing out wrong, that I had regarding the, you may recall Chairman or Commissioner Scott brought up the issue that there were some trails shown on the site plans there. And I had, based on a mistaken conversation with my client, thought that we had easements for those. We do not. Those are going away, so they are not gonna be part of the application. I assume everybody's seen the letter that I put in.
That's G.G.
My client had been referring to, and I'll make this part of the record, was the areas in here where you see the red arrows. That's where the easement access is. For some reason, when I was having a conversation, when we were in the room together, I just assumed they were referencing those trails. Those are not. They haven't cut them in, fine with it, they're gonna be gone. So no need for easements or anything like that.
Okay.
All right? So with respect to Mr. Geisholz's memo, if I can make that letter part of the record.
So that will be Exhibit II. Thank you.
Thanks. So the only issue that Mr. Geisholz essentially raised was the request for the waiver of the Erosion and Sediment Control, Sedimentation Control. And in his June 1st memo, he indicated that that could not be waived. And on June 26th, my client responded with a letter in writing saying, "We're withdrawing that request for the waiver because we complied, we submitted revised plans on June 26th, which had the Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan on it, as well as the locations." And if I can approach, I'll make this part of the record as well.
So that's JJ.
But with respect to that, on page three and four of the plans, you'll see the location of the silt fencing on there. And then on page five of the plans is the detailed description of the type of sedimentation and erosion control that would be installed on it. It's identical in most respects to what this Commission approved and certified in a prior application for last 20, excuse me, 19 and 21, right across the street from it. So, and I didn't see any comments from Mr. Geisholz in the memorandum indicating any issues with that. But obviously, if, when the Commission were to approve this, we come back and he wants to look at it, he still controls it until we get to the bylaws. I think he's indicated that in his memo, that he would be able to make changes that the Commission might request prior to signing off on the bylaw.
Okay.
So he had indicated that if he didn't want to waive the Sedimentation and Erosion Control, you could deny it, but since we complied with that and we're not seeking a waiver, there'd be no reason for denial at this point in time based on these previous indications that the plan otherwise meets all the requirements for approval at this point.
All right, quick question for you. That revised plan with the Erosion and Sedimentation Plan, was, was that the one that was reviewed by the town engineer, or was it the original one?
I believe it was that one, because Mr. Close's letter, or the last email to Gary that he forwarded to me was in July. They indicated, saw enough of the comments that he had on it.
Okay.
Michelle, please, JJ, is that a revised site plan?
It looks.
It is a survey plan for a high-end place subdivision.
Would you?
It's revised through July, excuse me, June 26th, 2022. It, the entire document is already part of the record.
Okay, so do we need to put that in again?
We don't have to if you don't want to. I just wanted to use it for demonstrative purposes.
Yeah.
So we can hold it back if we need to.
Let me just make sure that it is up here. June 26th, is that the?
Correct.
Okay. It appears as though we already have this as Exhibit U.
I'm, I'm fine with, I'm making it part of the record then.
Okay. So it's just an extra copy for us to have?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. You go with that, Sue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he's following it, so there's no JJ.
Right, so the II was the memo that he just hand-delivered to us.
And the, the letter from Kristen Clark is in the record and has Exhibit T in response to Mr. Geisholz's memo of June 1st, 2022, which is his M.
T is her response?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, got it. Any further questions for Attorney Garrity? Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So.
Anyone like to second? Thank you. All in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, great. Thank you. Appreciate it. So this is our only item for discussion and decision tonight, so let's move right into that. I think a lot of the questions that we had following the last meeting were addressed just now, and also in the memo from Gary Geisholz. That is Exhibit HH in our materials tonight. So I'd like to start by just going down the line and allowing everyone an opportunity to kind of make a statement or a question so that we can start considering what we want to do here. Nicole, anything to add?
No, I was just curious about the access to the open space. I just, I'm not sure how easy, how easily it's accessed. That was my only.
Now, given that the trail are gonna be taken away.
So that map, that was just up, right? Is in here on GG. So the parcel will continue to be accessible from other entry points, but not this parcel.
Right.
This, so this parcel was, a neighbor made the trail. That section of it. So it looks like you can still get in from the northern end and kind of come down through it, right?
Yes.
I'm looking at the map sideways, so if I just screwed up the directions, please. Okay. Yeah. Anything else, Nicole?
No, that was it.
All right. Rich?
I have no questions right now.
Okay.
My only, my only concern was that trail from last week, but it's already been addressed, so I'm good.
All right.
No questions right now.
No questions. Okay, and Jason?
No.
None from you. Okay. One thing in the memo that I just wanted to discuss as a group was the slope of the driveway. So it looks like on the map that the slope is actually greater than 10%, which is the requirement for a shared driveway, is 10% or less grading. And I'm trying to find.
Are you still in GG?
I am in HH.
HH.
Where was that? So there's, there are solutions around that, but I just wanted to go through them. And if I could find it, that would be very helpful. Yell out if you see it before me, because I definitely remember reading it and now can't find it. Oh, lot access. Section 6-2-5B. So in Exhibit EE, the proposed shared paved driveway has a slope of 15 degrees, which was previously approved in Nottingham Hills Phase 3 subdivision approval. However, pursuant to Section 6-2-5B of the subdivision regulations, shared driveways may not exceed 10% or more on the shared portion of the driveway. So the grade can be higher when it's your own driveway, but when you're sharing it, no more than 10%. So as such, the proposed driveway must either be redesigned to achieve 10% slope on the shared portion or be designed to the design standards of a private road. So for me personally, I would be comfortable making that a condition of approval, that the plans be resubmitted either as a 10% or less grade or as a private road. But it's something that I want to make sure we do get in there. So it looks like. I want to go through the waivers too. And I just want to make sure that we get them out. So 5.22G, that one, we don't need to worry about anymore because that's the Erosion and Sedimentation Control, which has been readdressed in the updated plan. 5-22B and C. Looks like they were submitted properly, and we went through that. If you look at Gary's memo and his bullet on that. And then. 6-8-7, I believe, is also all set stormwater management. But let's confirm that together.
Wasn't the stormwater plan, the town engineer, I think, accepted a stormwater plan?
I'm just looking to make sure there's nothing prohibiting, okay. Because 5.2.2, we're actually prohibited from wavering per our own regulations. So I'm just making sure that we do have the ability to waive 6-8-7, and we do. Okay. Does anybody need a minute to finish up with the memo? Or are you good? Okay. I would be happy to do either a pulse check and additional discussion, or if someone would like to make a motion. We have some language that we can go off of for the, to address the waiver requests, one of which is no longer applicable, and the application. So looking for this Commission.
I'm, I'm just trying to catch up to you. The 6-8-7, are we, I don't see it referenced in the memo from Gary.
It is in the waiver request section on page four.
Oh, okay, I got it now. Thank you. And you said you were checking to see whether or not we can grant the waiver as per our own bylaws.
Which we can. However, we cannot grant the waiver from 5-2-2, but that's no longer applicable as the Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan was filed on the updated site plan. I believe we can do this in one motion, or we could chunk it out and do the waivers and then the approval. So. Again, I turn to all of you.
It may be awkward to try and fit them all into one, but for expedience sake, maybe we do it that way, or at least try to.
Yep. So we do have this language, and whoever would like to read it, just skip 5-2-2. Well, we won't grant, we can actually just still use this. We can deny the request for a waiver. It won't matter, because.
Okay, you want me to?
It's not, doesn't need to be waived anymore.
You need someone to read it?
That would be great, if someone would like to make a motion.
All right, I make a motion. Now therefore, I hereby move to approve the application known as.
We gotta start, sorry.
What's that?
Gotta start with waivers.
What?
Up.
Oh, gotcha.
That, because we need to decide on the, the waivers in addition to the approval or denial.
Oh, I'm sorry. You are absolutely right. Good catch. All right. So I'm just gonna go from, I move to grant, or do you want the, the whole thing in there?
I think I move to grant is fine.
Okay. I move to grant the application's request for waiver from Sections 23.5B.1 of the East Line zoning regulations to eliminate the requirement of a 40-foot vegetative perimeter buffer and from 6-8 stormwater management requirement pursuant to Section 6-8-7 of the subdivision regulations, which require, should I leave that in or not?
Yeah, you can keep going, because we can, I'm pretty certain that we can deny that waiver request and have no outcome on the rest of the application as the waiver request is now, is in our application, but is now not applicable.
Okay. As I was saying, from Section 5-2-2B, which requires the submission of a natural and cultural resources and site analysis plan. of a natural and cultural resources and site analysis plan, and section 5 dash 2 dash 2C2, which requires the submission of a preliminary resources impact analysis plan, and deny the applicant's request for a waiver from sections 5 dash 2 dash 2G.
Would anyone like to second that motion on the waivers?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. I know we talked about doing it in one, but I think chunking it up might be. Any discussion on the motion on the waivers?
Seems pretty clear to me.
Okay, great. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, the motion on the waiver to grant the waiver for 23 dot 5B1 and 6 dash 8 dash 7, while denying the waiver from 5 dash 2 dash 2G, passes. Moving on to the remainder of the application. We do have some language here, I think that I think this represents what we have discussed. There will be, Gary's recommending an erosion and sedimentation control bond, which is pretty standard. Revised site plan to address the 10% slope on the shared driveway. And an erosion and sedimentation control plan, which I think we should still keep in this motion, given that we denied that portion of the waiver, but it seems like that will be a non-issue, as it may already be in the record. Discussion on that. Would anyone care to make a motion regarding the approval of this application?
I'm gonna have to read all, all these points on it.
Go for it.
I hereby move to approve the application known as the application of Kristen T. Clark, P.E. of 20 Risingwood Drive, Bowe, New Hampshire, and Niantic Real Estate LLC owner. Application for a two lot re-subdivision of approximately 5.13-plus acres of land zoned RU-40, located at nine Upper Kensington Drive, Eastlime Assessor's Map 40.0, Lot 17, and the proposed subdivision plans, six sheet drawing set entitled Nottingham Hills Subdivision of Lot Line Revision of Existing Lot 27 and to Lot Resubdivision of Lot 27, prepared for Kristen Clark, P.E., dated October 27th, 2021. Revised through 6/26/2022 by Donald L. Gesick Jr., L.S. of Gesick Associates, P.C., 19 Cedar Island Avenue, Clinton, Connecticut, which is further subject to the following administrative requirements and required modifications to the site plan and/or other materials submitted in support of this application. One, pursuant to sections 5 dash 2 dash 2G, an erosion and sedimentation control plan prepared in accordance sections 22A dash 325 through 22A dash 329 of the Connecticut General Statutes, which provides proper provisions to adequately control accelerated erosion and sedimentation and reduce the danger from stormwater runoff on the proposed site, shall be submitted and certified by the commission prior to filling of milars on the land record. Two, an erosion and sedimentation control bond in the amount of 200, oh, sorry, $2,000 per lot shall be posted with the town in a form acceptable to the Town of Eastline Planning Commission prior to the start of any site work, including but not limited to exploration test pits, clearing, grubbing, filling, and grading. Three, a revised site plan signed, stamped, and sealed by a professional engineer and land surveyor at a scale of 1 to 40, demonstrating the shared portion of the proposed paved driveway is no more than 10% slope, or demonstrating the entire length of the driveway can be constructed to meet the construction standards for a private driveway be submitted to the commission prior to the filling of the milars on the land record. And four, the applicable items above shall be accomplished prior to the filling of the subdivision on the land records or other documentation of planning approval, and no site work shall commence until all applicable conditions are satisfied. I have to keep going, don't I?
Yep.
All right. This application is specific to the subdivision plans submitted as the application known as the application of Kristen T. Clark, P.E. of 20 Risingwood Drive, Bowe, New Hampshire, and Niantic Real Estate LLC owner. Application for a two lot re-subdivision of approximately 5.15 acres of land zoned RU-40, RU-40, located at nine Upper Kensington Drive, Eastlime Assessor's Map 40.0, Lot 17, and the proposed subdivision plans, six sheet drawing sets entitled Nottingham Hills Subdivision, Lot Line Revision of Existing Lot 27 and to Lot Resubdivision of Lot 27, prepared for Kristen T. Clark, P.E., dated October 27th, 2021, and revised through 6/26/2022 by Donald L. Gesick Jr., L.S. of Gesick and Associates, P.C., Cedar, 19 Cedar Island Avenue, Clinton, Connecticut. Any changes in the subdivision plans shall be, shall require prior approval from the commission and/or the director of planning. Any change in the development plan layout other than those identified herein shall constitute a new application. The owner slash applicant shall be bound by the provisions of this application and approval.
Do I hear a second?
I'd like to second that.
Thank you. And as we open that for discussion here, I just want to state on the record that that was very great aloud reading. Not easy. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. Thank you, Attorney Garrity.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into zoning referrals, I do not believe we have any tonight. Same with municipal referrals. And we do have just one item of old business, which I know that Ally has been working diligently on this summer, which is the review of subdivision regulation revisions.
Yes, so we're still in the works with that. I've been working closely with Alex to get the most best practice stormwater management into those subdivision regulations, also taking out some of the subjective language to get a little bit clearer and bring some clarity to these regulations. But it's ongoing, because I would like to.
Okay, well, thank you for your work on that. We do not have new business tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you. All right, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? There we go, we're adjourned.